So we have forums, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's December 16th at 2:43 PM. And let's do a quick roll call. Obviously, I'm here and I'm Heidi Dran, back of the chair. And then we have in-person.
This meeting is being recorded and summarized.
In-person, Brian McCafferty.
Okay, and then online, we have Erica. And if you could just tell us if you're alone.
Erica Chavez, Vice Chair. I'm alone in my residence in a room.
And then actually have Momi. Momi, if you could tell us if you're where you are and then if you're alone.
Got it. Momi Maderas, I'm at home and I'm alone. I'm home alone.
We also have Monique.
Hi, Monique Bolo. I'm here in my classroom by myself.
And then we also have, is it Kaena? Kaena, sorry.
Hi guys, Kaena Bonacorsi, ex-official member, the Maui County Early Childhood Coordinator.
We have Deputy Director Kraus.
Aloha, good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners.
And we have anybody else? Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and get started. So first, we, is... Do we have any public testimony?
None, in person, Chair.
Okay. So the next thing we'll move on down to is approval of minutes of November 18th. So did everybody get a chance to look that over? And is there anything that needs to be edited? Or if not, we just need to approve those minutes? I looked it over, it looked good.
Looks good to me. I make a motion, we approve minutes of November 18th.
Somebody second it.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Old business. We still have the surveys on our agenda. I'm going to defer that for next month, so we're not going to go on that topic. That's okay to the rest of the Commissioners. And I think there was a suggestion that we take out at Old Business, item number one, identifying the needs of young people, their families, and the group agencies that serve them. I think there was a suggestion that we take that out of our Old Business. So how does everybody feel about that? I think we had left that on because we were, that was when we were trying to figure out our goals and our priorities for the Commissioners. So that actually may not pertain to us. How does everybody feel about that?
I agree.
Okay, so I just need someone to make a motion to take that out on A1.
I make a motion to remove item number one, identify the needs of young people, their families, and the group agencies that serve them.
Someone can second it?
I second it.
Excellent. Is there any public testimony on that? I don't think so. Okay, so we'll move on to community events.
Hi, just FYI, there's a message from Tonata. She's in the waiting room, wondering if she's on the correct link.
Okay. I'm not... Kaena, if you're able to get in touch with her, can you let her know that I sent her an invitation just a few minutes ago and to use the link from that one? From that email?
Okay, I'm going to try call her and I'll correspond by...
I tried calling her, but the phone number that I have, I think, is the main line for this school.
Got it. Okay, I will try respond to this message and give her my number and we'll try and get her in.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we have update on community events. So is there any follow-up information in that regards to highlighting CCY meetings in the social media, Commissioner Chavez, Chair Chavez, Vice Chair?
There's no updates, but I would like to halt that attempt and focus my priorities elsewhere. So I would...
Defer that?
Put it on hold for now, yeah.
Okay, no problem. And then if there's no public testimony on that, we can move up to any community events for January that the CCY might need to be involved in or want to attend. Does anybody know of anything for January? Momi, you guys doing any events or anything like that? Okay.
No, we're not, sorry.
That are going on. So no public testimony on that. So the next one is Talking is Teaching. So good news is we've had some movement in this area. So we were able to correspond with Director Takamori along with the help of Deputy Kraus. She kind of was our liaison in that, which is really helpful. So our Commission had some questions about the process for the posters. So one of the questions we had asked is, do fasteners and racks need to be purchased for the posters? And he replied, no, that they have them. So that's great, we don't have to figure out the cost of that or anything like that. So that's awesome that they have that. The next question is, will it be possible for posters to be reused after being removed from the buses? He said, it depends on the quality of the paper. Usually when posters are removed, they are disposed of, and we do not hold on to any old posters. So like, let's just say if they were in good condition, I'm sure we'd have to kind of ask him if we, when they take them down, if we could come and get them or something like that. But like he said, it depends on the quality of the paper. So. How long will the poster, how will the posters get installed on the buses? And can CCY community partners assist with the task? So Ho'oe Kika was talking about like, if there was nobody really, you know, if they didn't want to, if the bus employees didn't want to, if they didn't have that available to help put those posters up, they were willing, our Commission would be willing to jump on board. But he wrote that no, their bus contractor couldn't install them. So we don't even need to do that. So that's great.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next question is, when it's time to remove the posters, would CCY community partners assist with the removal task? And he said, no, the contractors would do the removal. And then the other question was, when our Commission intends to arrange a press release to credit all partners who are working together to highlight the Talking is Teaching campaign? So that would include Ho'oe Kika, Maui County Support Services, DOT, our Commission? And is this okay with DOT? He said, yes, once the posters are installed, it would be good then to push out the press release. So he's, I think Ho'oe Kika and I, we were all talking about maybe doing it prior to the posters being installed, but, or as they were being installed, you know, if it was like a group event. But I think Director Takamori was saying that, no, once they are installed, then we can do the press release. So kind of our timeline we were looking at was like after the new year. So this is December, so either Jan, I think it's a little too soon for January. I probably by February is what I'm looking at, because we probably might have to meet one more time to talk about other things that are going, and then the printing. They do use ACE printing. So one of the things we did want to talk about is the budget in regards to the posters. So basically, they do use ACE printing. They would need at least 32 fixed route standard displays and at least eight cutaway displays. And these include a few spares if some get damaged. And it's recommended that two posters be placed in each bus, but that would require the double amount of posters needed if we were to do that. So. One of the things I was hoping that Deputy Kraus could talk about is the project budget. So like, I feel like our Commission were still so green about learning the process and the protocols. So I asked her if she could kind of educate our Commission about how the budget works? And is it just a simple matter of us just going up to the mayor and say, hey, we need $1,400 because we want to do this project? Or is there certain processes and procedures that need to be done in order for something like that to happen? So I'll let her go ahead and kind of give us the information.
Real quick, Tonata should be joined, there she is, okay?
Thank you.
So real quick for Tonata, for roll call, can you just tell us where you are and if you're alone?
Tonata Lulecio, Secretary of School in La Jolla, Kana Poli. I'm alone in my office.
So just real quick, Tonata, we've been working on the Talking is Teaching campaign, where we're putting those public service announcements on the buses. And we finally got some traction, so we've been working with Director Takamori of DOT. So it looks like it's moving forward. So we're now at a place where we're going to probably be during this meeting, voting on which posters we're going to be putting up, talking about the cost and how that's going to get paid for. So Deputy Kraus was going to give us a little education on how we go about doing budgeting.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So to speak generally, the Commission does not have a budget allocation in this fiscal year. So the way that the budget process works is the department establishes a budget earlier in the fall that's then transmitted up to the mayor's office. The mayor finalizes his budget and transmits it to council, tentatively expected in March. And then from there, the county council members deliberate and make whatever modifications before the budget is approved and adopted and goes into effect July 1st. So we're not currently in a good position, just based on that calendar year, to be able to request for additional funds at this point in time. So likely for these specific poster projects, we'll have to explore, or the Commission will have to explore, maybe some partnership opportunities to help provide the fiscal sponsorship for those posters. But if the Commission is identifying topics or subjects that you might like to reserve some funding for, that can definitely be a conversation the Commission can have in the next few months and we can examine adding the Commission's requested budget into the next fiscal year department proposal.
So does that, does that make sense, Commissioners? So one of the other Commissions I know, what they do is they say like, we need $500 for like, community bags or whatever, to hand out to the community. There's also like, let's just say there's a budget cost for going to trainings, stuff like that. Anyway, so they get that into the budget and allocated, so then they have that budget for that year. So I think our Commission, in the upcoming months, we would want to kind of talk about, because like, I'm sure this isn't going to be the first project our Commission is going to be wanting to do. And we kind of need to know, like, if we are wanting, you know, even if it's just like, let's just say we wanted to do something like scholarship-wise. How much money would we, would our Commission want to have money set aside for that? Like, stuff like that, you know? So in the next few meetings, I guess we should talk about, like, how, what our Commission is and what we, if we do have a type of budget, how much? And what would, what would we be allocating that money for? So like, this would have been a great thing, I think, to have in our budget. But unfortunately, you know, we're way too late because the budget process has already started. And usually it starts in October, right? Is that right, Deputy Kraus?
Actually, we started a little earlier than that, even in September. So if the Commission would like to identify budgetary requests, that would likely take place over the spring, summer months next year.
Okay, so we would kind of need to start talking about this like after the new year and for the following year, not for 2025, but for 2026, correct? And then also, we would be attached to your guys' budget? Is that it, Department of Human Concerns? Or is it, is it separate type of...
I believe it would fall under the department as we sort of staff and support the Commission. I'm not 100% certain on that, but we would confirm that for you folks, too.
Okay. So does that all make sense and why we can't just kind of go to the mayor and say, hey, we need this money? Because there's a process on how we go about doing it. So obviously, there's a cost to getting this, the posters printed. And it sounds like Heidi would need some assistance with that. So I know that there are a few different routes we could go. One is just kind of asking for donations, I guess. But I don't know, as a Commissioner, you know, as our Commission, is that allowable? Are we allowed to? And if it is, would we, who would those donations go to? Like Ho'oe Kika's? Or would it go to Maui County Support? Because they're the ones that are kind of doing the posters. Like, we kind of would have to iron all this out, you know what I'm saying? So that, you Commissioners, do you guys have ideas?
So my question is, Ho'oe Kika, Ho'oe Kika and Maui County Support Services, they appear to be partners in this project with us. So it would seem fair for them to be on board for each one-third of the cost. So then they would only have to come up with one-third of the cost instead of full amount. Heidi's been doing the fight work with DOT and, I mean, our Commission in the words, has been doing fight work on this. And these other two agencies are going to have, be receiving credit for also being in this project. And they have substantial budgets, especially, I know one of them does. So anyway, it seems fair that each stakeholder shares a third of the cost. So that means we would have to raise a third, which is easier for us to do. Might be able to get a donation or something.
Well, okay, Kaena, Kaena?
So just a comment on that. So with this project, so Maui Family Support Services is the umbrella agency. Ho'oe Kika is a program under them. And Ho'oe Kika and the partnership, this is one of their leading or their key campaigns. So when you're talking about a cost sharing, it's not exactly a third or even half. Because the Commission is one of perhaps many partners that is willing to help them get the word out and spread the campaign. So it's challenging to say that they would take a third of, or it would be split into half, a third or a fourth in this particular scenario. So what can be said is that the Commission, for lack of a better understanding, and this is not a true example of a dollar amount, right? The Commission has been able to come up with $500 that is going to contribute to the campaign in the effort to get it advertised on the buses. So it's very direct in where you folks are targeting the funds that you're offering. But in actuality, it's Maui Family Support Services as the umbrella, Ho'oe Kika as the program, Campaign as the initiative by the Ho'oe Kika partners, one of many that they do. And then the Commission comes in and says, hey, we want to help spread the word on this campaign and offer our support by getting it done in Department of Transportation. So that's just to comment on this conversation. And then a little bit back, when you folks were talking about budget, even though it's a missed opportunity to have a direct budget for you folks, there is still opportunity with the upcoming budget season by understanding what kind of youth programs are being supported and what kind of policy is being supported. I'll give an example of that later, that you folks are on board with and just do a general mahalo to the council or the mayor's office for including these things and coming, you know, as far as they have come. And then acknowledging, hey, there's more work to be done. So take advantage of that opportunity as this budget season arises. Is back a few sentiments ago that I wanted to offer, comment, sorry.
Okay, so you're saying that, you know, even though we're kind of late for this year for our, you know, budget, for budget requests, we can still, what are you saying, like still?
You folks can provide support, you folks can provide testimony by seeking to understand what is submitted in the budget and what kind of programs are already supported by the county. So an example of that, I have, you know, seven that support early childhood. So you folks can have an awareness of what those are and say, hey, council, thank you for putting that much money into the early childhood services. Or you can say the, speak on the youth centers. Or you can see on the suicide prevention. So there's a bunch of nonprofits that are getting monies. And the Commission can say, these really impact the youth in our community and this is how, so thank you. We know that there's more work to be done, but thank you for what you're doing, continue that support. You know, just offer the, hey, you guys are doing a great job. That's what we're getting from the community is that you folks are on track with what you are funding for youth and provide comment on that. So you can either provide it as a collective through Chair, or you can provide it as individuals.
Okay, so basically validating what they are supporting? And then how would we get, would it be able to get us a list for that? What?
I can, or the department can, the list of youth programs that are funded by the... But you would want them not only from human services, you would also want to know what Parks and Rec is funding, what police is funding, you know, because the different departments have different programs. Yep, PALS, Parks and Rec. So each department has a, I mean, you could perhaps email, or I don't know what the process is, so I'll have to defer to Jessica, but email the department to ask the other department heads, hey, what youth programs are you folks funding? Could you use the support of the Commission and testimony in any of those programs? And then the department can give you folks a list to review. Each department can, you know, Human Concerns can, Rec can, Police can. Those are the three primary thing. OED might have some that offers support for childcare or those different services. So asking each department head what they might be supporting could get you a list that you guys can review and offer comment on.
So if they're, so would it be in their budget, their budget plan? So would we be able to just look at their budget plan and say, hey, look at, they're supporting this and this, that, that is in line with our Commission? And then we would from there kind of do a little shout-out or like contact?
Provide testimony when it...
To like bulk it up, no? Like, right? As much as we can get for all the programs.
You could, but the, but the process is, the programs that are submitted or supported have been... So you would want to have conversations with the department heads or the division heads? Because you don't want to say, hey, bulk it up. And there's reasons that it's not necessarily being bulked up. So remember, you folks are a conduit between department and division, mayor's office and community. So as much as we'd like to say, hey, bulk it up, we may need to understand there's reasons that we don't want to say bulk it up, you know? And we don't know what they are, we need to educate ourselves on that.
So the first step would be to like, to get, look at all the departments and see which, what programs they're supporting, that's the first step. And then the next step would be maybe to reach out to the department head and do a little bit of a chit-chat with them and ask them about, you know, how to, if we can like, you know, provide public testimony or submit a letter of, of, you know, appreciation that they are having that in their budget? That's what, that's what you would suggest?
Yep.
So, great? This is exactly what I think our Commission needs to be.
It is, and sometimes that...
I agree.
This is more impactful than the direct funding. So you know, think about really educating yourselves on all the departments and how they're affecting youth in their, you know, it could even be transportation. That's great, they're putting the effort into putting these signs up, you know? So the big and the little make a difference, and that's how the Commission makes that indirect impact. It's not always about the money. Sometimes it's about the, hey, we're on the right track here. We're getting a feed from the community that this is the need and you folks are addressing that need, you know? So any kind of tone that can support that is really great work and impactful nature of the Commission.
Right, and that's basically what I want our Commission to be, is very like, helping our community and the different departments are recognizing that we are, you know, a facilitator or we're, you know, we're totally helping bring people together. Not necessarily we're paying for everything or we're asking for money for everything, but we're just getting the right people together, just like this Talking is Teaching. We're working with Ho'oe Kika and Maui County Support Services to get this in and along with Department of, you know, Transportation to get these on our buses. It's just, so I think like, I love this idea that we're, so I would like to, if possible, like, I'll take a look at all the departments and see which, is there, what they're funding? And then we can talk about it in next week's meeting, I mean, next month's meeting, no, it's not next week, next month. And then we can kind of go from there, we can kind of set a plan on then the next task from there, if that's okay? Does that sound like a great plan, Commissioners? Yay, I'm excited.
It's a great way to be that community government conduit, you know?
Right.
It's, yeah.
I don't want to just be known as like, if people don't know us and what we do or anything, I want us to get really out there and get everybody, all the departments like, hey, look at that Commission, they're on it. That's what I want.
And by doing it as a collective, you're not singling out one organization or one cause. You're looking at all the impact across the county on children and youth.
Yes. Momi, you had a question?
Yeah, I actually had something I wanted to share. So I think what Kaena had shared with us is very impactful. I am a recipient of county grants for my program. And we are always looking, especially around budget time, for somebody to testify on our behalf. We go and we testify and we try to tell them why we need our funding again. But this is something that we all have to reapply for and we have to go through the process to be, for them to say, yeah, okay, we'll grant you that money for another year or for another two years if you do it well enough. So yeah, I think that's very important. If I could have the representation of our Commission or all of our youth-serving agencies, that would be awesome. Yeah.
See, and this is why I feel like, I feel like as we are growing, all of us are growing together, we're kind of learning what our Commission is supposed to be doing. So I think we're doing great. Okay, so I will take a look at all the departments and then look at, see what they're supporting and bring it back to the table for next, hey, Erica?
I was going to say that, yeah, like, I like how Kaena brought up the Police Commission and their services, because that's something that is really close to my, or what I like to do. So I'm definitely willing to help you, Heidi, to, you know, make contact with the Police Commission even, maybe cross over. See what?
We'll look at the budget, look at their budget stuff first and see where they are supporting our youth programs. And then from there, then the next meeting, we'll talk about if we want to contact the directors, that, you know, the people that are...
I think it would be Department, Police Department on that one versus Police Commission, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Thanks, Kate.
So getting back to the Talking is Teaching, so this is, this is kind of why it was important for us to kind of hear about the budget process and how this all works out. And it's just not a matter of just thinking that we could just have somebody pay for it or ask. So I, I do know that we probably should get a quote from ACE. When I was talking to Ho'oe Kika and Maui County Support, we were kind of guestimating this probably going to be, each poster would be cost about $20 to print. And if we only need like, let's say it's for 32, and then we have eight cutaway displays, so... So, and then we need a few extra, I don't know how much extra we would want. Would we want 10 extra, five extra? But if we were to kind of guesstimate, we're looking probably between about $800 to $1,000. I do know that I've been talking to certain people about like, hey, this is a great, you know, we're doing this national campaign thing. And there are individuals that are in the professional field, they're like, hey, if you're... And there are individuals that are in the professional field, they're like, hey, if you're gonna do that, we're totally willing to donate. But like, I think Kaina said it should, the money probably can't come to the commission. It's gotta go somewhere like Maui Family Support Services, they make a donation for that specific, um, project or to Ho'ouakai. So, I know we can probably, yes, um, Momi.
Um, I can speak on that, um, so Maui Family Support Services is the fiscal agent for Ho'ouakai Partnership. So it's not a program that falls under MFSS, we are the fiscal agent, which means we take care of their funding. So, um, I spoke to my CEO about what we were talking about in our meeting and wanting to do the posters and she says that Maui Family Support Services, being the fiscal agent, can take it in, can take in the donations and your market specifically for printing of the posters, so we can work it out that way.
Okay, so, so I guess my question is, is it okay for us commissioners to talk to various people in our community and ask for donations? Is that something that we are allowed to do or is that something that? And, 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 Momi?
Disregard them.
Uh, Momi, did you have a question or a comment?
It, so it would be really on Ho'ouakai, correct, to, I mean, they should be, or we should be more in contact with them to facilitate these conversations, to get these funds, correct?
Well, I'm just asking if, as commissioners, are we allowed to go in our community and just talk about this, this project that we're doing and saying, hey, um, you, if you want to support this, you can make a donation to, um, Ho- you know, Ho'ouakai and send it to Maui Family Support, you know, is that, is that right, Maui, Mo- Momi, we'd be sending it to Maui Family Support Services and then?
That is correct. Sorry, I'm gonna be butting in here, sorry, I'm. Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was in the wrong meeting room for some reason, I was waiting for.
Oh, no. I was waiting for you to answer our question.
Yeah, so I think it's a little bit of a, I think you're kind of, um, as a commission, you shouldn't be really picking a one number for over the other because you're representative of the community as a whole. So I think I'll caution against, uh, soliciting donations for a particular organization. Be specific, I think you should have something more of a general broader, I mean, asking them to, you know, support in other ways might be a good idea, but, and then not specifically mentioning a, a, on one organization over the other, because you are sort of representing everyone, you know, everyone's interest, who's doing with children and youth, so.
Okay, so, so you, Kari, so if, if I have someone that I'm talking to in the community and they're like, you know, totally want to get behind that program, it sounds, I mean, that project. Where, you know, and we understand that you're having some cost issues with printing out these posters. Where can I just drop, give money, drop off a check to somebody, what, is that okay to do, is that okay to talk to? And then we just direct them to Maui Family Support Services or?
I think so.
Donations is not for the agency, it's for the program.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I think you can redirect them to like maybe MFSS to get the, get more information on. That's not necessarily, you're gonna be saying, well, you should go and make the donation too, and I think Kaina also have something else also to add. So if I were to respond to this, I would say, let me connect you with Ho'ouakai Partnership. And then have it be them who reaches out to Ho'ouakai Partnership and they have the conversation about what funding is needed or what, you know, so the role in this scenario for the commission is that you help make the connection to get this campaign onto the buses. That was a very essential role, you're not picking one over the other, but you said, hey, we will try our best to connect you with Department of Transportation. And then there's not a money exchange, there is, you know, that, that's your folks thing. So somebody says, hey, this is a great campaign. Great, you want to know more about it, please contact whoever your contact is with Ho'ouakai Partners and talk story with them. And then from there, it's Ho'ouakai Partnership, because this is their initiative, right, to spread this campaign. It's up to them to see how these donations get and what is needed for the printing of these posters to get on the bus and all of those things, because the commission has helped them, is helping them by spreading the word. So there's not a monetary, again, it's same thing like advocating at the budget for all youth programs or the ones that you folks can think of and how it makes an impact. You're, you're taking an initiative across the board and it's not about the money, it's about spreading the word because this is good for all children. Um, and this is a campaign that can do it. So, um, you know, you might have the same thing happen with, um, the suicide prevention work. You might have the same campaign happen with no smoking in the cars with babies. Or safe sleep, you know, so the commission's thing is, hey, how can we get this spread to a wider audience? But it's not necessarily that you folks are responsible for the funding of it or that you're directing funding to any one particular cause, you're saying, hey, you think this is a good idea, go ahead and connect with them. Um, and they want your help to spread the word, so they're accepting these connections.
Okay, so would it be beneficial to talk to Ho'ouakai, to Deb and ask her, hey, so if, are you guys gonna set up something so that if people want to donate to this specific project? Would that be beneficial?
Um, or for them to do, or, or even, you know, suggesting, hey, you guys might want to think about, um, having the process in writing of what it is when people want to support this or any campaign that you folks are choosing to work on. Because then again, you're not locking yourself into one, you're not directing a funding or a funder to one. You're taking a, across the board approach and encouraging a process be put in place for things that come up.
Okay, so since I've been, um, communicating with Deb, I think I will reach out to her again and ask her if she is going to have some type of donation, uh,
fundraiser. Huh? Or like asking about a fundraiser or like how much it is that for her to take and then how the commission can help support funding that project or initiative, right?
I'd be careful about funding a specific project or initiative, um, but encouraging the organization and the the entity have their said process in place.
Right, so, because what I, what I, what I want is like, so if someone is willing to donate funding to, to get this project, I, I don't want them to be calling Ho'ouakai or, you know, and then be like, they, they don't have something in process, like, well, we haven't figured it all out yet, you know what I mean? I saw, it's, I think it'd be a good idea, the next step would be to talk to Deb and say, hey, you kind of need to have something in place so that when people start calling you and wanting to donate, that you have, and that you know how you're gonna direct the funds and we're not telling them to donate, we're just telling them, hey, call Ho'ouakai, because they're in charge of that. So I think that'd be the next, next, um, step for me to do and then also to get an actual cost quote from ACE about these, because there are certain dimensions and certain types of paper that has to be used. And just, just so that we know what the cost is, so we're not just having this guesstimated amount and then we can kind of be a little bit more specific, this, so does that sound okay, everybody? So that's the next step that I'll do, is I'll get back in touch with Deb and then I will also contact ACE and ask them about the exact amount it would cost. Okay, so Nirvana just joined us, yay. Oh, the, the traffic is terrible. So just to catch you up real quick, we are moving forward with the Talking This Teaching posters. So we've been talking to Department of, uh, Director Sakamori, who's in charge of DOT. He gives all the specs on being able to put up these posters, he has contractors that will put up the posters. And then we just need to, the other thing we need to do is we need to kind of choose which posters we vote on the posters we would want and then send that on to, um, Director Sakamori so that he can approve him. So Deputy Kraus felt like it was best if we finalized which ones we want, rather than just sending the whole thing and be like, these are the things, these are the ones we're kind of thinking of, if we just kind of vote on the ones that we want and then send it to him and then we can get those approved. So, is there a way for us to kind of look through? Or did everybody on their computers, can they see which ones that, um, Heidi? Alan Castor? I sent it to you, but did you send it out to the rest of the commissioners?
No, I didn't.
Oh, like, um, we're going to? I think.
Share.
Share screen, yay. So there's different ones that are, one is like, let's talk about the bus, obviously we probably should pick that one. So, that would be one style we would want, but yeah, let's talk, let's, so that's probably one we definitely want on the bus.
Yeah, would it cost more to run different ones?
No, they should all be the same size, they're all like standard, like once, they're all gonna be the same size, same look, I mean, so I don't think it's gonna cost, it's just the sizing. Yeah. Okay, so, um, let's talk community is another style. Uh, she, she gave a lot. So, she probably. Do they go on every bus?
Um, Heidi, what would also be helpful is where Ho'ouakai is, um, having additional ones of these displayed, I mean, where in the community, what other partners they have on the mass display. Um.
So I talked to Deb about that, they haven't, they haven't done, I think there, there's some of these like in Kaiser and stuff like that, but they're not in like, like, uh, community halls or, or stores or even in the mall. I don't think they're there yet, but that's what they're going towards.
Because that might make the difference to where some, another entity, let's say the Kupuna might be wanting to do it with, um, the, um, the one, let's talk with the grandparents, so if it's a Kaukua or some other, you know, entity that wants to get on board and help them spread the campaign, that would be one that makes perfect sense for there, so then the commission say, ah, we don't need to do that because somebody else said they're gonna do that, you know, so just understanding where else they're targeting or who else they're having conversations with helps.
That's a good point, excellent.
Commissioners, let me know if you want me to go back to specific posters or if you're ready for me to stop sharing.
How many posters were there, do you know?
Nine.
Okay, nine, okay.
And then another food for thought to think about from early childhood's perspective and where these um, other posters may be, uh, the ones that are related to transportation is a nice link because your avenue to spread the word in this particular scenario is transportation. So, you know, the things that, you know, where you're gonna go, where you're gonna, what you're gonna see, um, and it's, it doesn't necessarily mean the bus is great, it's good, but this one about cars, it's also great and good. What else do we have that's in this mix that may be transportation related only because of your immediate partner? Then let's say if you guys want to do, connect them with parks, so that it gets into the community centers, okay, then that might be the poster set that you're recommending goes into the parks and recs kind of centers. So, um, again, it's a way of expanding yourself, starting with transportation, when you're looking at these, hey, these make sense for transportation and the others might make sense if we're having conversation with parks, the others might make sense if we're having conversation with Kaukua, et cetera.
So, very true and very good points, so the, the other thing I wanted to point out on our posters is you can see who the community collaboration is with, our logo is up there, so we're, we're part of that collaboration. So, um, this is when we do our press release, these are the, these are the people along with Department of Transportation that we want to give credit to that we're working with. Um, so our logo, our logos are up there, so that's great. Um, so we have nine posters, how many posts, how many posters do you think we should, uh, styles should we choose from? I like what Kaina is saying is keeping it in conjunction with transportation, so I feel like the buses and the car one is definitely appropriate. Um, maybe community, because they are driving around in the community, that'd be another poster that would be, um, appropriate, um. Is there any other, so that's three so far, is there, those are three styles, is there, is it, do you think there's any other ones, Commissioner, that you feel like that would be appropriate to be on the bus?
Jessica, can you go through one more time? Um, the nine?
Yeah, okay, so the bus is the first one. Community is the second.
So we have five different posters.
What makes you unique is the third. Color is the fourth. Play is the fifth. Grandparents is the sixth. Numbers is the seventh. Rain is the eighth. And cars is the ninth.
And, um, Commissioner Brian just made up a good point, he says that there's, there's supposed to be two in each bus, two posters in each bus, are we gonna make it the same two, are we gonna make it two diff- one, two different ones in the bus? Good point. Because that would also affect how much we choose, I guess, too.
Um, just weighing in on, not that my comment matters, but I like two different, because you give them two different things to, to look at. Um, and I did put the nine in the chat, just the topics of that, so that you could go back and forth in your brain on it. Um, when I'm thinking of a young child riding the bus, so you not only have the bus, but you have the car, what are they looking around to see? You know, they're looking around at colors, they might go and find numbers, so that's where you might put those things in there and the community. So if you're thinking about the interplay with, with the posters and if, if it catches a parent's engagement with the child, what, that's what this campaign is trying to get them to encourage, right? Is engage with your child to do something and this poster is a reminder of what and how you could do it. So, you know, like, it's a given, the bus and the cars are great starters because it's the transportation. You know, looking around community as you're riding the bus, what do you see in the community? That's encouraging that particular conversation. Um, colors, numbers, and even the rain one are things that also came to mind for me, just looking at early childhood as some things that encourage that interplay. Um, the play, the unique, uh, the grandparents, those may be in like community centers or other places, libraries that you would go and see, you know, with the grandparent, encouraging play out in the outdoors, maybe playing in the bus, not the best idea. Um, you know, just, just saying. Uh, but just things to think about when you're thinking about these posters, as a parent, if you're sitting there looking at it, what kind of conversations does this poster inspire for me to engage with my child?
Very well said, I, I totally agree with your choices. Does anybody else have any other comments?
Um, um, the, um, the bus with the, uh, posters, they'll be in two different places in the bus, am I right, front and back?
Uh huh.
So, so if we're looking at, uh, the same flyer, um, one in the front, middle or back, they might consider that as well, depending on where you're seated at the bus, that you want the best. Um, you want to have the information there so that you are able to see it wherever you're sitting from. You know, I have to be honest, I haven't ridden the bu- I have not ridden the bus in a very long time. But when I do, when I do, I know that if you're sitting at the back and you're getting out at the back, you're not gonna see any of the information if it's posted in the front. That's just kind of my thing.
I think that's why Director Takamori said there's a specific size that they have to have, you know, to make it visible and there's holders and stuff like that. So very true, you, you wanna be able to see it for sure. And the nice part is that there's some, these posters are so colorful. So so we could kinda take a vote on which we think is appropriate to put on the buses. And I kinda like the idea of putting two different ones rather than two of the same ones, cause it increases more conversation. And what Tonata is saying, if you're in the back of the bus or if you're in the front of the bus, when you, if you see. So um, so we're looking at community, bus, color, numbers, rain and cars. Does that all seem appropriate? And does anybody have other, other ideas or other comments that maybe they might want something else?
Now, I know that play is not, you know, we're looking at play as what you shouldn't be playing or anything. But I do play games, you know, with my kids in my car. You say, okay, let's count how many, how many signs you see as it passes or you know, or um, you know, it's kinda like the wheels in the bus go around and around. You sing those songs. And you, you know, you play games to keep them engaged in conversation as you're driving or you know, you look out and you say, okay, we're, you know, we're, what do you see outside the window, you know, or how many trees, you know, this and that. I mean, play can be something that happens in the car. I'm sure parents like to engage in conversations about um, you know, little traveling games. But um, if, if play is out, play is out. We're not playing in the car. We can talk about community and numbers and rain and colors, which is, I agree with all of those. I don't know, do you guys play games with your kids in the car? Do you guys talk about that? Okay. I'm talking from experience.
Yeah, I do. I, I play, I spy. I spy something green and they'll have to find it for me as we pass it. Yeah.
I, I feel good with play too, so. That would give us, if we took in play two, one, two, three, four, five, six.
I'm sorry, could we possibly see the play one? Yes, to see what they're encouraging them to do in that poster?
Yeah, and I don't know how much rain falls, you know, and the bus is driving around, maybe not so much the rain.
Yeah. Oh yeah, they're saying like slide, hop, chump. Hmm. So it's not, it's not quiet games, huh?
It's not the car games.
Yeah, it's kind of more active games, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good, that was good to look at it. So we have back to, if we, if we take out play, then we're back to five. Yeah, or yeah, five. If we, if that is if we're gonna um, one, two, yeah. If we don't include rain, if we include rain, then that would be six. So we have talk, talk about cars, numbers, color, buzz and community. Um, do we feel like that's enough or do we wanna add one more?
Oh, I think that's good. I mean.
Yeah, that's good.
Sorry, I can, my opinion is I think that's good.
Heidi?
I think we have.
Okay, you vote and then I'll have a quick question.
Okay.
That may or may not impact.
Okay.
Have Vanessa really voted? Oh, you made a motion on this? Sethon, I make a motion? Oh, I remember.
Yeah, to put the motion together.
Oh, somebody can motion that you voted.
Make a motion that you vote on. Which posters are going to go on the buses?
I second the motion.
Yay. So the post, so Brian just made a motion to um approve the following, for us to vote on the following posters, which is community, bus, color, play, I mean, not play, color, numbers and cars. And Nirvana seconded that. So are we all in agreement with those choices? We can say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's unanimous. Okay, good, awesome. Okay, so motion carries, we're gonna use those posters. So I'll um, have Deputy Kraus for those posters on to Director Takamori for his, for him to approve.
Okay, what did Kaena want to? So my question is, with the everlasting importance of QR codes, so this would be a question to take back to Hawaii Kaikei Partners. Is there a QR code that links them to other posters? That, you know what I mean, that um, again, that might link them to other posters or might link them to the whole campaign as a whole. And I would highly encourage that QR code be attached to this poster, uh, because it takes your campaign even farther.
Good recommendation. I will, when I talk to Deb, I'll ask her about that. I think that, I think so. I couldn't imagine not, but I will ask her for sure. Is there any other discussion in regards to the talking is teaching, Commissioners?
Not for me.
Not for, okay, so um, we voted on the posters. I'm gonna be talking to Deb about her sending up some type of donation protocol or whatever, the, what their process is so that we can refer people to them um, that may want to make I don't know, a donation to the, to the project. And then um, alright. So is there any public testimony in regards to what we were talking about? None, none. Okay, good. Okay, so now we can move on to the new business, which is um Bill 145. Did everybody get to read that bill?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Kaena, did you wanna talk about that since you kinda were the one that kinda brought that in for our, on our agenda?
Uh, yes. So with that bill, this is another one of those opportunities to say, hey, great job, coming from the community, you know, mayor's office. Um, so I will speak on behalf of the early childhood and the childcare providers that this is a bill that is beneficial for our licensed childcare providers by providing them that tax exemption. Um, so you know, they really did hit the mark to make some kind of a positive impact, you know, and updating it since property values have greatly up, you know, risen since nineteen ninety-seven when the original one was um, put forth. So uh, you know, just again, it's that conduit, it's that uh, the, that we, we have the, we take the opportunity to tell government, hey, you folks did a good job on this. And as far as I know, it is the only county that has that in place right now. Um, but other counties since hearing of it may adopt a similar. Kaua'i has the next similar um, in that they provide uh, property tax exemptions to property owners who rent to uh, child, licensed childcare providers. So they have a similar, but um, I think Maui County has led, led the way with this and this is a scenario where they kinda got it right. Not kinda, they got it right.
It was a fifty thousand exemption and it went up to two hundred thousand, right?
Yep.
So that's quite a big thing for, so I think it'd be good if we could um do what Kaena's saying is kinda give a, a shout out and appreciation about having the council pass this. So is that who you would write the letter to, is the, is Maui County Council?
Yeah, the whichever committees, I don't know, Jessica, did you follow that one by any chance, the committees that, it kinda came up on us? You know, uh, through the article is how it caught an awareness of it, but do you know which? Who, who would the gratitude go to?
I think the discussion started in the Budget and Finance Committee, who oversees, I think, the real property tax.
So the next time that they have a meeting, you know, you can pro, and that's on the agenda or that they ask for public comment, you could just submit it in writing for the record.
So do we know when the Department of Finance meets? I know I have it on my calendar somewhere.
I don't know.
I'll look, I'll look while we're talking. So does anybody, does any of the Commissioners want to write a letter or provide public testimony in regards to this um, bill? At their next meeting? Erica, you will?
Wait, what am I doing? Writing a letter um, to?
Either writing the letter or, or, or providing public testimony uh, in regards to this Bill 145, saying that we, that how it's really, you know, appreciated by our commission and it's.
Continued or needs to be continued or?
So at this juncture, the commission would make a motion um, to um, authorize Erica to write um, the letter to Budget and Finance on behalf of the commission.
It's a, a letter in support, right? That's, that's part of this, okay.
So I'll make the motion um, to authorize Erica to write a letter to Budget and Finance on behalf of the commission.
I will second.
Yay, awesome. People are gonna get to know us.
Yeah.
Yay.
That's a purpose.
Thank you, Erica.
Want to tell you now, you're awesome today. Really, really good information. Thank you.
Copy of that letter too, would you? Okay, so is there, there's no public testimony on that? Did everybody get to read the civil beat article in regards to that?
Wait, 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 sorry Chair, I don't know if you guys voted on that motion yet.
Oh, did we not vote? I'm sorry. Okay, so we mo, we held, we did the motion and if everybody.
There was a second.
Yeah. And Nirvana seconded. If everybody's in agreement, can we say aye? Or Erica?
Aye.
Okay. Every, it's unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good job, Erica. Thank you for offering. And then did everybody get to read the civil beat article in regards to that? It's basically kinda summarizing the bill and uh, and it was introduced by uh, Yuki Lei, um, who proposed. So I don't know, do we wanna write a letter to her thanking her to do that, that she did that? She, she introduced Bill 145?
I think rather than the single out, I think acknowledging that the whole commission um, took action on it. I mean, the whole council took action on it and um, that's where it really matters because they all got behind it to say, or it, it, I don't know, I didn't watch who opposed and who supported, but um, by allowing it to pass and not singling out a council member, we stay neutral and say, good job, everybody. Let's do more of this.
So basically, we should be writing a letter to the Maui County Council or providing public testimony saying that we, we, you know, so Erica's gonna do the budget finance. I don't mind doing the Maui County Council and thanking them for passing that.
I think it's all kinda the same because the budget and finance is a committee out of county council, so.
Okay, so they'll.
If you do it to the general, you're covered by, or if you do it to the thing, they're all, yeah, in one way or another part of it.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Alright, moving on. Is there in, there's no public testimony on that? Um, the other thing, okay, so moving down to, there was an email from Deb. Um, did everybody get that? Um, it's been so long, about that? Vanessa, do you remember what that email was for Deb? And it was what it was in regards to is about a
The program.
The program, yeah. Okay. Try. Okay, um, Leading for Change in Early Childcare Education Program, yeah. So Deb recorded that on opportunity, in case it was interest of you guys, um, it's a leadership development opportunity begins in February, ends in June. There are eleven virtual sessions that take place on Saturday mornings and there's an application. Um, it was December ninth, and so I don't know if any of you guys were interested in that, um, but you guys could have um, applied to attend that if you wanted. Did you guys get that email?
Yeah, I sent it.
You sent it, okay. So if you were, I just wanna put it out there, if you guys were interested in it, I'm sure you could still probably sign up. Anybody have any questions in regards to that?
Heidi, you might just wanna do a check um, on the sunshine law, if, if more than X amount of you do engage in that opportunity because you made it a, a thing through the commission, a notice through the commission. So you might wanna check with Yukari about if there are, you know, or raise hands who is interested and how that might work uh, with you folks and the sunshine law.
Okay, so first of all, is anyone interested in the Hawaii Early Childhood Educator Excellence and Equity um, project is offering a free research-based forty-hour leadership development program for ECE professionals called Leading for Change in Early Child Care and Education. Um, and it's a training that will be conducted by Dr. Anne Douglas and her team of University of Massachusetts, Boston's Early Education Leaders Institute. And this is being funded by the state's preschool development uh, grant, Bird Two Five Renewal Program. Um, so did anyone want to uh, apply for that or uh, take those, that, that, take that training? I just put it out there just in case you guys are any interested. If not, I think we're good. I, I know I'm not gonna be signing up.
I'm not either.
But if anybody else wanted to, it's totally cool. All good? Okay, so we can move on. Um, it's not, there's no public testimony on that. The other thing I wanted um, is inviting future guest speakers that are applicable to the commission. So I felt like, you know, like, like, again, like our commission is so great and we're learning so many things and we kinda sometimes are bumbling around. And I thought it was super great that Deputy Kraus kinda gave us a talk about the, about the budget and how that process works. So there's other things that we can learn, I think, also. So if um, there's like just like learning about, you know, how we're supposed to, like, not supposed to, but it's a good idea, like how Kaena was saying, like, learning about the different departments and what they, what they sponsor for uh, for our youth and how we can help facilitate that. So getting different people in to talk about what they do and we get a little bit more information, more educated, and so we're not so um, green and fumbling around. So is there any topics or field, areas that you guys feel like you would like more information or education in? And if there are, we can um, put it on our agenda and then look for guest speakers.
Heidi, another way you can approach it is um, the, when the mayor did their round of things, they had the community meetings that are posted online and recorded. Each of you could take a geographic and say, here's what the community had said about the children and youth programs. I mean, some of it may be a none, they, you know, um, this certain community said nothing about it, okay? But at least then you folks will have a pulse for you folks collectively and not to put the burden on, you know, one person, but you folks share it so that, you know, yeah, you take a different community and then come back and say, okay, I watched the two hours or four hours of this and then they said, you know, the ten sentences about the children and youth, we just wanna be aware of that, especially going into uh, budget season. So this is again, a different way to inform your folks selves while you guys are informing each other by something that was in, you know, brought in the community. So perhaps you guys live in a community and you wanna take it that way, I don't know how you might wanna do, but that's a way to learn before you folks go and say, let's invite, again, you don't wanna targeted organization, but you guys might have a collective of what you learned from a certain community's budget meeting, being that that was part of the mayor's process and part of the whole process of what we try and support through the budgets. So just a suggestion.
Perfect. So I like that suggestion. I like that having us um, go to community uh, meetings in our areas. So like, what do you got, what are you Commissioners?
Or you can find them online, cause they already happened. So on the Akaku or the, the uh, the county website, it shows the different community budget meetings that happened. They were all recorded.
Um, Akaku's YouTube is the most up to date.
Akaku's?
Yeah, they have, yeah, they, they'll have playlists of board and commission meetings.
Okay.
And then online on the county website, under boards and commissions, you'd be able to access the agendas.
Okay, so that, should we divvy up this little task and, and look at past um community meetings and then look at who might wanna community meetings and then look at who might want to be attending the future community meetings in certain areas? How do you guys, how do you commissioners feel?
Um, that's a great um, start because the information is already there, we just need to go and look at it and then, you know, from there, find the people that we need to address those um, concerns. Um, is there a website that we can, or links that we can drop in the uh, conversation so that we can access, have access to?
Yeah.
So Vanessa is gonna, yeah, Vanessa is gonna put it in. Uh, or you can put in, or you can email.
I'll put in the chat and email.
Okay, she'll put it in the chat and email and then.
Thank you so much. That makes it so much easier. Thank you.
So let's do this. Let's have uh, have all of us kind of look at the community meetings. Um, and then we can kind of kind of look at the ones that are, you don't have the list by any chance Vanessa, of like, which ones are scheduled for the upcoming in the next, what, what the dates are for that? Or no, not yet?
Um, so according to the calendar, it looks like the next Budget Finance and Economic Development Committee date is on the seventeenth of this month? Yes, so tomorrow, but just looking at their agenda, they didn't have Bill 111 listed on their agenda. So you could submit a letter to them in regards to that, but it's not on their agenda for tomorrow.
Okay, so do they do community needs in different areas, right?
Yeah.
Like, like for Pu'kalani, like uh, Up Country and then Kihei and then Lahaina, right? Is that correct?
And, yeah, and then just looking on the county calendar.
Hi, maybe I can kind of give you some information then. Um, I know for like the Budget and Finance Community Meetings are gonna be probably in March for next year's budget.
Okay.
Um, so you want to start looking, because they all usually would have a they'll have like a big Budget and Finance meeting to talk about the scheduling and they'll have the, the calendar out for all of the meetings that they're gonna have. So by February, end of February, I would say there would just gonna be something that you would be able to look at um, by your favorite meeting, I mean, I think. Um, and I can also let you folks know, uh, but I can email Vanessa so she can pass it out if I get anything from like the Budget and Finance also for, so it passed the first reading out of the BFIC committee or was it out of council? Because if it's out of the council that you look, you'll keep looking for in a council meeting. Um, if it's still in the BFIC committee, it's likely that they're gonna wait till after the New Year's because it's gonna be a new term starting January second, so likely for second readings and whatnot, they'll be taking that up in the next year, so.
The meetings I was referencing was the one that the mayor did.
Oh, the community meetings.
Yeah, the community meetings that the mayor did for you folks to have now so that you guys prep yourself for the other ones that the council's gonna do. So what you already have that you could review at your own personal time to come back to next meeting is those different community meetings that happened around the county that the mayor did because you'll start to hear, now remember, it was a politi, political election, you know, time when that was happening, so take that with, with whatever you need to. But just what you want to hear is, did they say anything about the youth programming at those meetings? Did they want the mayor to know this? Because if they wanted the mayor to know this, they're probably gonna want the council to know this. And it's something that may have made it into the budget. Uh, whether they're thanking them or whether they're saying we need more or whatever, but you guys can bring your own summary of what happened in those meetings from what you, what, what you had heard.
Right, and I had, I had, I did see that he had held meetings like Up Country and Kihei. So if we could all just take like, so if it's possible, I, I kind of make a motion to have every, you know, whoever wants to take a certain area and just kind of look over what happened at that meeting and kind of bring the information back to our next uh, meeting in January. And then um, determine when the next community meeting. So for example, Tonata, if you were gonna take Lahaina and see what, if he did, there was a community meeting out in Lahaina, find out what was, you know, what the outcome of that meeting was and what was said, and then bring that information back and then let us know when the next community meeting is for that area.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if that's, that's, that's what I've been motioning, so I'm willing to take Up Country, um, because I live up in country.
I will take Central.
Okay.
Moni, I'll take Central.
Okay, so just so you folks know, I think Up Country had a couple of different ones. So you're covering the Pu'kalani and Haiku.
Yeah.
Uh.
Jessica?
And then.
Uh, Chair, do you live up in country?
Yeah, Pu'kalani.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take, I'll take Kula if you want to take uh, Pu'kalani. Or Haiku, Haiku Kula, whatever. And then I know there's Paeja, you want to take Paeja? And just read up about what was the community? Um, and was there any community meetings in Lanai or?
There were Lanai and Moloka'i, so.
There were.
Don't forget about them.
So that's what I said. So Moni?
I can do Moloka'i. I'll do Moloka'i.
And I can take Lanai.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So.
You folks, um, remember, I think Hana had their separate meeting as well and Kihei.
Oh, yes, yes.
So we can just gonna take Pu'kalani. Um, if no, if nobody takes Hana, I'll, I can, I can look at Hana. Um, Brian's gonna do Paeja.
I mean, I go out there for work a lot, so unfamiliar with.
So you want?
A little familiar with that community, so monthly I go out there at least, so.
So you'll do, you'll do Hana and Pu'kalani?
Yes, if we're, need to double up, yeah.
Um, do we have all the communities covered? What about Kihei? I can take Kihei if no one else wants to take Kihei. And look at that. Did we get all of our communities? Moni was doing Central and Moloka'i.
Moloka'i. And can I ask a question for verification or clarification, I guess? Um, so we are looking if there is any issues brought up in these meetings, in these past meetings that have to do with youth. So it's okay, we come back and we say no issues on youth at this time?
Right, and then find out when the next community meeting is gonna be held. When, when the next community meeting is held and where and time and place?
And you not only want to do the is, like, issues as far as challenges, but you also want to know if you had somebody show up to say, hey, thanks for the support. So any topic brought up that affect children and youth, um, you can make note if it's direct or indirect. Um, you know, say you hear something about the road not being safe and the primary reason for that is because it's in front of a school. That's something that you're gonna just want to bring to attention to. So you're thinking broad of the impact on youth as to why the testimoniers may have said that.
Thank you.
We don't need to vote on this or anything, do we? Can never tell.
Just make sure it's an agenda item for next time for you folks to discuss the summary of the uh, community budget hearings by the mayor and whatever.
Is there any other questions or comments in regards to that?
Kari with lettuce.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, Yukari did say things were good. Alright, so there's no um, public testimony as far as I know in regards to that. So the next is, um, real quick is the UPD, DHHC update, the Early Childhood Engagement Survey and Preschool Open Doors Program.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna start with Preschool Open Doors Program. Um, just some of the statistics with that that we have um, for the early childhood seats for three, so Preschool Open Doors is a uh, financial assistance for three and four-year-olds in the licensed programs. Um, so of those, um, we, Maui County had seven hundred and fifteen applications. Um, and, but of those, about fifty percent of those were denied. So we're trying to work on understanding why were they denied. Um, half of those were because of age, so we are advocating, again, this is another area, if you guys want to take an advocacy stance on it, right? I'll let you know more about that. We're advocating for them to um, decrease the age down to the two-year-olds that are in the preschool programs. And that will help with about a, a quarter of those that were denied. Um, the other is, you know, families are not following through on um, on providing their information and that one we're kind of scratching our head about because we have supports in place and they're still not accessing it. So, you know, we're having conversations about how do we make this better. Um, and this is statewide, but our numbers from Maui County are about, you know, half of those that were denied were denied because they didn't follow through. And then, um, and then again, the other half were approved for these seats. We don't think it's an advertisement because, you know, the capacity or um, we don't have that many seats that somebody, you know, new applicants can put their child in. So we're, we're just trying to investigate, how do we spend the twenty-five million dollars that the state has uh, to really get family support as we're saying that they need it? Um, so that's kind of the update on that and ongoing conversations. And then with the family survey, the family engagement survey, that is also PDG effort. It's on pause because the staffing is um, not, and there's a uh, they're re-upping the next year in grants. So we're hoping that maybe January, February, that extensive um, early childhood family survey will be distributed, but I will keep you folks updated. So it's been developed, it just needs to be put into some kind of a survey program and then put out to the community. You know, and it's, it's not just childcare, but it's also like Kiki injury, um, prenatal services. So it's a very comprehensive early childhood systems family survey for the people's understanding of the services that get provided.
So when you get the, when you get the survey sent out and then the results come back in, are you gonna, you're gonna be able to share the results with us?
Um, I will let you folks know where the results are or the reports are um, and then can highlight it. Same thing with an update of our early childhood community profile. Um, and any kind of profile or geographic profile sheets that help you better understand childcare, early childhood services in Maui County as they get developed.
Thank you. Do you guys, any of the commissioners have questions or Aina or anything? Regards.
No, no problem, just slowly, no, I'm gonna just slowly change.
So our next meeting is January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and I want to thank everybody. I thought this is a very productive meeting. We're getting more and more productive, so love it. So thank you all commissioners. Anybody else have any lasting comments or anything else they want to share before we sign off?
Nope.
Okay, awesome. Alright, everybody. So we'll see you guys next, next month and Merry, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everybody. Have a good one.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Take care.